Morning, everybody. And welcome to the Taos County Board of County Commissioners Commission Regular Meeting of Tuesday, October 3rd, 2023. It is now 9:04 a.m. And I'd like to go ahead and get it started. Madam Clerk, if you could please call the roll.
Commissioner Romero?
Present.
Commissioner Vehill?
Present.
Commissioner Mascherini?
Yes.
Vice Chair Romero?
Present.
Chair Brush?
Present. Thank you. For Item 3, Inspirational Devotion, I'd like for us to take a minute. We often talk about our team here at Taos County as a family, and I know the town of Taos does as well. So I would like us to just take a moment of silence because, as many of you know, we have suffered a few losses amongst our family this last week. Our county manager, Brent Harmio, lost his father Lawrence Harmio, and the town of Taos lost a firefighter, August Beckwith. So if we could just take a moment of silence and think about these folks who have been so important to our family and our community. Thank you, everybody. And if you would please join us in standing for the pledge and the salute to the flag. And Commissioner Vehill, would you lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance, please?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic on which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And Vice Chair Romero, would you please lead us next?
To the flag of the states of New Mexico, let's see a symbol of perfect friendship among the united pledges.
Thank you, everyone. Item 6 is Approval of Our Agenda. Commissioners, what are your wishes?
Motion to approve.
Second. Okay. We have a motion from Vice Chair Romero, and we'll give Commissioner Vehill the second. Madam Clerk, please call the vote.
Commissioner Romero?
Yes.
Commissioner Vehill?
Yes.
Commissioner Mascherini?
Yes.
Vice Chair Romero?
Yes.
Chair Brush?
Yes. Thank you very much. We have an approved agenda. Item 7 is Awards and Recognizations, one of our favorite parts of our agenda because it's honoring all of our folks who work so hard here at Taos County to keep the lights on and the roads open, and much, much more than that. Mr. Harmio?
Yes, thank you, Chair Brush. Before we bring up Ms. Vehill, I'd also like to recognize from our E-911 Director, Robert Zatagusa, who next week will be completing one year of service of Taos County. From our EMS Department, Gabriela Priya Balkon will be celebrating two years. And the Sheriff's Office Deputy Richard Topman will be celebrating four years. And then we have from our Finance Department Seth Gutierrez will be celebrating six years. From E-911, Brianna Gomez will be celebrating six years as well. Chief Deputy Assessor Christina Ramirez will be celebrating seven years of Taos County. One of our fleet mechanics, Joseph Sintas, will be celebrating seven years. From the Sheriff's Office Deputy McTeague will be celebrating seven years as well. From our Solid Waste Station Attendant Donald Bylon, he'll be celebrating eight years. From the Sheriff's Office, we have Marvin Armijo, who will also be celebrating eight years. From our Planning Department, Joe Gonzalez will be celebrating eight years. From the Sheriff's Office, Sasha Sanchez will be celebrating eight years. And the Attorney's Office, our Paralegal Shannon Brumley will be celebrating nine. From our EMS Department, Wayne Archelata will be celebrating nine. Also from EMS, Thomas Rogi will be celebrating nine. And then in the Assessor's Office, from the Records Division, Elena Romero will be celebrating 16 years of service. And also would like to recognize Anisa's birthday. Today is her date of birth.
Happy birthday, Anisa.
And with that, well, also if you could step forward, Emily is in the training as well as Mr. Madrid. That's why they're not down here. But we'd like to present you also with this certificate for years of service and recognition of 20 years of service to Taos County presented to Elsa Vehill, September 2003 to September 2023, Taos County Board of Commissioners, FR Bob Romero, District 1, Miguel Romero Jr., District 2, Darlene Vehill, District 3, and Jeanette Brush, District 4, Ronald Mascherini, District 5, and Brent Todd, county manager. Thank you for your 20 years of service to Taos County. And Elsa has probably a handful of employees that's also been in different departments. So she brings a different perspective, and there's a lot of times, I know Public Works is an example, and Joe, Deborah, and Jason worked more closely in Public Works as director and with other directors. Elsa was invaluable in her procurement. She had learned that experience back in the day when she worked in Public Works. So she helps out not only Public Works but various other departments. Thank you, Elsa.
Thank you. Do I have to give a speech?
Yes, you do, and so does Anisa.
Just a small one.
About 20 years' worth.
20 years' worth. Well, geez, I didn't think I was going to hit this mouse so soon. It flew by. Geez, there's a lot I've done. So I just wanted to thank, this is hard for me, 20 years. I wanted to thank everyone for being so patient.
This conference will now be recorded.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Brent and Elsa, once again, because we can't say it enough, thank you. Item 7B is another favorite part of their agenda, new hires. Yay. So to present our new hires for the month of September 2023, we have Ms. Brandi from HR. Good morning, thank you for being here.
Thank you, guys. So I'd like to present the new hires for the month of September. So first off, we have Paulina Fativa. She did start as a planner in planning and zoning. We have Augustine Royale. He is returning as an EMT firefighter. We also have Emily Rolison Elliott. She is our new finance director. Zachary Pinnick is also an EMT firefighter. We have Renaima Estes joining us back in dispatch. Shannon Connor joining our EMT firefighter. Matthew Tofoya is a road maintenance operator, too. We have Connie Martinez. She is the SEP receptionist at the senior program here in Taos. And Keegan Moran is also returning to dispatch.
Excellent. Thank you. All critical positions that you guys have been working hard to fill. So thank you so much.
Yeah, thank you, guys.
Okay, this takes us to Item 8 on our agenda, which is Public Comment. 8A for public comment, please phone into 575-737-6310 after we listen to the folks who are here in the room who would like to comment. Anyone who would like to comment shall be limited to three minutes. I'm going to get my timer ready. And we don't take any action or engage in like question and answer with folks because state law requires us that we publish any topic that we're going to take action on or answer questions about 72 hours in advance. So your topic is no doubt fascinating enough that your friends and neighbors would have wanted to know that we were talking about it. So we are just going to listen carefully. If there's anyone in the room who would like to take their three minutes to speak whatever's on their mind, you can feel free to approach the podium and please give us your name and where you live in Taos County. And we have one person in the room, Ms. Flor Serna, thank you very much.
Hello, thank you. My name is Flor Serna, and I work with the Rio Fernando de Taos Revitalization Collaborative. If anyone in this room doesn't know, we have a river. I think it's there. My sense of direction is obvious, this side, the Rio Fernando that runs right through the heart of Taos. And I'm here today to let not only our commissioners know, but our community members know that we are looking for volunteers on October 14th to come and help us clean out trash out of the river. Last year, we picked up over 3,000 pounds of trash. Obviously, that is a huge amount, so a shout out to Solid Waste also for helping us, you know, not only carry that trash, but to weigh it and to help us keep track of how much trash we take out of the river each year. So again, on October 14th, we'll meet at 9:00 a.m. at the Taos Land Trust. We'll probably work until about, you know, 11:30, and then we'll have lunch and snacks provided for all volunteers afterwards. So we will be outside picking up trash and take a short break around 10:00 a.m. to look at the eclipse, which will be real cool. So you'll guarantee be able to see the eclipse if you come out. And anyone can RSVP at riofernando.org/events, and we'd love to have as many people come out as possible. There will also be a short opportunity afterwards to kind of get an update from the Rio Fernando Collaborative on what we've been working on, and an opportunity for community members to speak up about what they'd like to see along the Rio Fernando, you know, more walking paths, less walking paths, more access, et cetera. We'd love to get folks' input. So thank you.
Thank you very much, Flor. Is there anyone else in the room who would like to speak to us for three minutes? Please. Good morning.
Good morning. Hello, everyone. I'm Blair Sagan. This is my first county commissioner meeting, and I'm excited to meet you all. I'm kind of recently in the area, and I'm really interested in affordable housing for artists. So if any of you are interested in that, let me know. It's a great need in this county, especially, you know, closer to the proper, but like all around the county, I have friends that already have had to leave because of housing rental prices. So yeah, I would love to work with y'all and talk further. So thank you.
Thank you, Blair, and welcome to Taos County. Anybody else here in the room who would like to speak to us for three minutes? Okay, if seeing none at the moment, I'm going to take our phone off of Do Not Disturb. And again, if you could call in 575-737-6310 for anyone who might be watching us online, you will have three minutes to tell us what's on your mind. So again, that number is 575-737-6310. And we'll give it just a minute or so. Okay, one last time, 575-737-6310. All right, we're going to move on with our agenda, seeing no one calling. Phones back on Do Not Disturb. Item 9 on our agenda is Minutes. 9A is Approval of the September 12th, 2023 Special Meeting Minutes. Commissioners, what are your wishes?
Motion to approve.
Okay, we had actually, Miguel had a motion. Vice Chair will take yours as the second. Madam Clerk, please call the vote.
Commissioner Romero?
Yes.
Commissioner Vehill?
Yes.
Commissioner Mascherini?
Yes.
Vice Chair Romero?
Yes.
Chair Brush?
Yes, our minutes are approved. Thank you very much. Item 10 is Public Hearing. 10A is Discussion, Consideration, and Decision Regarding Ordinance Number 2023-2, an ordinance adopting a local economic development project participation agreement and contract between Taos County and Red River Brewing Company, LLC, to expand a modern distillery production and sales facility. And with us this morning to present, we have Jessica Stern, our Local Economic Development Director. Actually, I think you're just our Economic Development Director.
Local.
Local.
Local, also.
And Cory, if you wouldn't mind guiding us as to when I open the public hearing. But first, we'll let Ms. Stern present. Good morning, thank you.
Madam Chair, Commissioners, good morning. I'm here to present for discussion and approval, Ordinance 23-2, authorizing Taos County to execute a project participation agreement with Red River Brewing Company that enacts a Local Economic Development Act LEEDA project to support the construction and job creation of the new Red River Brewing production facility. The LEEDA grant is a $150,000 grant reimbursable upon Red River Brewing obtaining the certificate of occupancy upon completion of construction. That portion is $100,000, and after hiring five additional employees by October 30th, 2024. Got some time.
Thank you very much, Jessica. Commissioners, any comments or questions for our Economic Development Director on this ordinance? Okay, seeing none, then Cory, I believe we go ahead and open the public hearing, correct? We're going to open the public hearing at 9:22 a.m. If there's anybody in the room who would like to speak to this project or on watching online, I'll go ahead and open the phone line again, 575-737-6310, if we have any comments about this ordinance, number 2023-2, adopting a LEEDA participation agreement and contract between Taos County and Red River Brewing Company.
Sure. I'm Michael Calhoun.
I think, do we need to have him sworn in? We're just going to have you sworn in first, sir?
Sure.
And then we'll let you go ahead. Madam Clerk, if you wouldn't mind, if you could raise your right hand. Do you swear and affirm under oath and penalty of law that the testimony you're about to give is true and factual?
I do.
Please state your name for the record.
Michael Calhoun. I am owner and manager of Red River Brewing Company, and we are pursuing the LEEDA grant to expand the distillery production facility in Red River. We're excited about doing this, looking forward to partnering with the state of New Mexico and Taos County on that. And, you know, we're a thriving business, growing, and adding people to our team all the time. I just, you said the goal, one of the goals of this grant is to hire five additional people by this time next year, and we're going to surpass that. We've got three people that we're hiring this month. One young lady from Amalia, another from Taos, and a young man from Red River starting with us this month. So, yeah, the distillery will be, or is already partially producing, and the tasting room should be open by Thanksgiving or certainly before the holidays later this year. So, does anybody have questions for me about the details of the project and what's going on up in Red River?
Thank you, Mr. Calhoun.
Sure, this is our second location in Red River. The first one's been in business since 2018. This is our second location up there, which is principally a production facility, but also a tasting room that's open to the public.
Thank you very much for that clarification. Any questions or comments from Mr. Calhoun?
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Since we are still in the public hearing, is there anybody else in the room or online who would like to make comment on this ordinance? 575-737-6310 is the number if you're watching and you'd like to give comment. Okay, Mr. Mitchell?
Good morning, Madam Chair. Can you hear me?
Good morning. Yes, we can. Good morning, Mr. Mitchell.
Good morning, Chair members of the commission. I just, I wanted to...
We just need to get you sworn in. So if you would raise your... You, Madam Clerk?
Do you swear and affirm under oath and penalty of law that the testimony you're about to give is true and factual?
I do.
Please state your name for the record.
Peter Mitchell.
Thank you, Mr. Mitchell. Please go ahead.
Thank you, Madam Chair, members of the commission. I just wanted to speak to this project a little bit from the side of the New Mexico Economic Development Department. I represent the Economic Development Department in north central New Mexico. My colleague is listening as well, Paige Ryan, and we represent Taos, Rio Riba, Los Alamos, and Santa Fe Counties for Economic Development Initiatives. And I've been working with Mr. Calhoun and his operation for approximately five years on this project. And what Michael didn't articulate is how valuable this business is as an employer in Taos County. And Michael, you can correct me on these numbers, but involved in the restaurant, I think, at peak season, I think there are upwards of 80 employees, and that goes along with the employees who are in the manufacturing operations. So it's a thriving business that employs a lot of people from New Mexico, as well as, last time I met with Michael, he told me he has employees drive as far, from as far away as Alamos, Colorado, to work there. So that speaks to very competitive wages that he pays his employees, and it's a strong business, and the Cabinet Secretary was very behind this before she stepped aside. And so I just wanted to express my support from the New Mexico Economic Development Department on behalf of taxpayers throughout the state. I think it's a super project, and I commend Mr. Calhoun and his employees for moving forward with this. He also has a tremendous product. His food's great, so I'm just giving a full-fledged endorsement to this LEEDA grant. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you very much. We appreciate your comments. Anybody else online, watching, or in the room who would like to comment? Okay, seeing none, we're going to go ahead and close the public hearing at 9:27. And Commissioners, I would entertain a motion to approve Ordinance Number 2023-2, adopting a local economic development project participation agreement and contract between Taos County and Red River Brewing Company to expand a modern distillery production and sales facility.
Motion to approve Ordinance 2023-2.
Thank you, Commissioner Mascherini, and thank you, Miguel, for the second. Madam Clerk, would you please call the vote?
Commissioner Romero?
Yes.
Commissioner Vehill?
Yes.
Commissioner Mascherini?
Yes.
Vice Chair Romero?
Yes.
Chair Brush?
Yes, thank you very much. Ordinance 2023-2, approving our participation in the LEEDA grant, is approved. Congratulations, Mr. Calhoun. Good luck.
Thank you.
And thank you again, Jessica, for the presentation. This takes us to Item 11 on our agenda, Presentations. And today, 11A, we have a presentation from Lisa O'Brien, the Executive Director of the Taos Housing Partnership, on their strategy update for the Taos Housing Partnership, affectionately also sometimes known as THP.
THP, thank you. Good morning. Can we put, maybe we're not ready for it. I did give Commissioners a copy of our newly hot-off-the-press roadmap, which is essentially, this is the work for Taos Housing Partnership for the next three years. I'll let folks in the community know if you would like one. I have them on the front chair here. And what I want to say first of all is, I think the last time we presented was at a joint town-county commission meeting in June, and we were celebrating at that time that we were 60 days in. 60 days in from my hire. It had been work, we're coming into two years on this, so I can't emphasize enough how much work has already kind of materialized before I come to you today. So in my fifth month, which is what I am in now, we've unveiled this three-year strategy roadmap. This was not something that we did in two months. This has been work that started, as I said, in November when we really were engaging. At that time, it was Taos Community Foundation and the Lower Foundation. We said, we've got to figure out housing, and we need to have a really broad conversation about that. I think every single person in this room is going to agree, housing is a need. So I just want to say, Blair, I'm really glad to have you here as a new resident, and I gave Blair my card, so this is another opportunity to just continue to have that conversation. Taos Housing Partnership, when we talk about housing, just in general, I think there's a tendency to go, great, what are you building? When does a foundation go in, and what does it look like when you build it up vertically? And I want to kind of bring everybody back to a center place of saying, housing, the way we're looking at it is really around housing stability, and housing stability in a community is, one, it's a responsibility for all of us. I want to say that. And I also want to just acknowledge that when we have housing stability in our community, we have stability in our medical environment, we have stability in our education systems, we have stability in our health indicators. So it's not just about what does the building look like and how many people are going to live there, and where is it going to go. I want us all to really be thinking about housing stability is about the stability within a community, and that's the basis of what we're going to start with, because obviously I haven't broken ground on any projects. If we could go to the first slide of my presentation, I think this is just a good, other way, please, just a good recap of, we've been talking since November about phases. So Phase 1 was what we started with, all of the community engagement work. Phase 2 was when an interim board of directors was seated. Phase 3 was the hiring of an executive director, and as I said, I started in May. It's also the standing up of a 501(c)(3). So what you don't see in this strategy roadmap is all of the kind of operational organizational things that are happening simultaneously. What you're seeing is a roadmap of programmatic pieces, which we're well on the way of working into, but I can't stress enough that there's also a whole other piece that's happening around getting the 501(c)(3) structure in place, getting operational dollars in place. And I want to remind everyone that Taos Housing Partnership is a staff member of one. So there's an awful lot going on all at the same time, and some of it you will not see in this three-year strategy report. I would like to say, at some point, we are not going to, I'm laughing because I put on my screen, Phase 4 is implementation, which is sort of what we're doing right now. And I'm going to say that I think when we hit January of 2024, we're going to kind of drop the phases, like we're just doing the work, and Taos Housing Partnership is well on its way in community doing this work. Some of the pieces that have changed in this sort of Phase 3, Phase 4, we made the final, sort of the next big shift at our September meeting, where we are now a five-member board of directors. So I've presented in the past that we've had kind of this, we called it an interim board, and then it went to a leadership team, and then it went to a transition team. And now what we have done is basically said, all of those folks that have gotten Taos Housing Partnership to this moment are now in other spaces and in other working roles. So we have committees. I will still be working with Commissioners and with town council members, and I think this is kind of the next step to say, great, you can probably expect to see me every quarter to give kind of like, here's where we are on the strategy roadmap. The roadmap not only outlines the programmatic pieces that we're going to do, sort of the activities, but it also puts timelines on it. It was very important when we all started this work to say, yep, housing is really big, and where do you start? So being in a very thoughtful, intentional way around sequencing has been very important. So some of the things you'll see when you look through that roadmap are things that we're not going to really pick up until second quarter in 2024, or maybe not until 2025, because we've got to take something on, we've got to sort of put the steps in place. The last thing I want for this organization and for our community is that we get out too far, too fast, and then we can't meet those expectations. So many of the members of my Leadership Transition Board know, I'm constantly saying, let's just, before we really hit the bandwaves, before we go out with this report too far, we need to make sure we've got sort of our ducks in a row. So I can't emphasize that enough. It's been a fast-moving bus, and we're well on our way. So the housing strategy, I keep putting strategy roadmap in, the next slide is the title page. I will let members of the community know, this is on Taos Housing Partnership's website. You can download that. This week is really the week that we're kind of hitting the bandwaves. I will ask folks to be attentive to the fact that we are looking for feedback on it with the caveat that we're not rewriting this plan in any big way. So what I'm looking for is folks have, hey, have you thought about this, Lisa? Or, whoa, what about that? I welcome those comments. I welcome those suggestions and ideas, but I have to make the point of saying, like, not everything is going to be sort of on the plan. One of the things I, and I laugh because I don't laugh, I laugh a lot, someone handed me a report today, and it went, this is a lot of the interface I have with the public right now. Someone will send me an email and say, hey, Lisa, I think you should do this, 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 and this. And I go, great, let's put that on the list, and we'll review it. Because sometimes it's really easy for folks to say, oh, go build a tiny home community. And the first question I'm going to say is... And the first question I'm going to say is, is that really what people in this community want? And then we start really chewing on the questions. So I want to emphasize that I welcome the comments, the brainstorms, the feedback. But I also want to be really clear that this plan has been in the works and it's based on data and research. So when it's finding that balance of not going out too far with asking for lots of comments and then kind of throwing everything back up in the air. The last thing we want to do is throw noodles on the wall and go, yep, let's try that. So this is a very thoughtful process, and I want to thank everyone who in this room and in this capacity has been part of that process from the very beginning. The next slide is just to let everyone know, as Commissioners, the strategy overview, this is really just kind of high level. This is the, this is the combination, the the sort of the higher level of what you have in your books, which is page twenty-eight through thirty. So this is the detail work. I'm not going to go through this report, obviously, page by page. But I do want to call out just a couple of things on the strategy overview. The first one that we have is below-market development strategies, and the first one you'll see in that strategy document is to launch a pre-development fund. This is in action right now. We had two hundred, about two hundred and fifty thousand dollars, two hundred and forty thousand dollars that was secured through philanthropic efforts over the last year. And Taos Housing Partnership launched that pre-development application fund in August. I would like to give a nod to Commissioner V. Hill. She has offered and agreed to stay on as the Chair of our Development Committee. The Development Committee was seated in September. They've gone through orientation. They are reviewing LOI applications that came in in August. And what we found right off the bat was, oh, we thought we were going to have this figured out in a month. It's a laborious process. I had that night before the application deadline, and I was in a panic that we were only going to have a couple of applications. We had a very good grouping of applications, and I'm very pleased to share that it was it was a wide variety. We had half of the applications were from nonprofit programs, which is what we hope to see. We know our nonprofit community is very strong. They have innovative ideas. And oftentimes, their ability to come into development or housing conversations has not been an easy stepping place, not because anyone's done anything wrong. There's just not been kind of an easy access point for them to come in. So interestingly, half of the applications we received requesting pre-development funds were from our nonprofit communities. And then we also had what we were expecting was sort of the more traditional developers, builders. Even within that grouping, we had a wide range. I think our committee has stuck with a good intention to say, we did not want, we didn't expect, so we didn't want shovel-ready projects. So the pre-development funds are really to kind of do some jumpstarts. Do we have someone who has a really cool idea but might need some technical support to kind of take it to the next step? Do we have a really beautiful idea, but we don't have the land? Those are the kinds of things that the Development Committee right now is chewing on. They have decided they want to kind of take their time with this. So we actually have a day, we have a session the end of October where some of those applicants have been asked to come in for interview discussion purposes. Again, this is one of those things that was not a, oh, here's the good pile, here's the bad pile, we'll fund these, we won't fund these. We're really trying to figure out, how can pre-development funds and how can Taos Housing Partnership help lift up some of those ideas? So we have this really cool opportunity right now to say, wow, we may have this great idea over here that meets our price point that we're trying to hit, but we don't have land. Great, how do we start talking with landowners who may be in a position to donate for a tax credit opportunity with this cool project? That's what this is going to be as we move forward. I'm learning the language around housing, around stacking funding. I sort of have this vision of a cake, and you kind of start thinking about the layers of a cake. For us as a community, and I say us, the we, but it's the collective. It's the town of Taos, it's the county commission, it's our nonprofits, it's our community members. We're going to figure this out in terms of what all of those layers are. So to give you an example, if we go through and pull off some of these things, mortgage assistance, finding money, securing money for that down payment assistance, which is a very traditional housing mechanism, is not enough. So we're now exploring, great, now let's start figuring out how we can find lenders and banking institutions to not just lend, but to invest in a mortgage point buy-down program, another layer of the cake. I had a community member call me. I'm very excited about this because, again, I think the buzz in community is we've got to figure this out. And it's not complicated, it's complex, and I think there's a difference there. I had a woman in town contact me who said, Lisa, I want to help you figure out how to set up a fund because I want to help spear it, and I want to encourage other people in the community to come up with a fund that would assist with closing costs. And I went, great, there's the frosting. So that's what this is going to be as we move this housing partnership forward, is the funding is going to be layers of a cake to put all of those pieces in place. The homebuyer education component, I believe we have scheduled to kind of roll out in the second quarter of two thousand and twenty-four. Again, you can't just put a shingle out on an office and say, great, we're doing homebuyer education classes, come on in. I had to go to, I went to training in Chicago in August. My mother was very glad to hear that I passed my certification exam, so I'm good to go for three years on that. But we can't just do homebuyer education classes. Taos Housing Partnership has to be mentored by another housing education agency. That's work we're starting to build out. So there's a lot of steps to all of these pieces. The homebuyer education piece is obviously a component. It's the pipeline to get folks ready to become homebuyers or to make a decision if they want to become homebuyers, while we're also building out these pieces of looking at the housing stock. Policy, education, advocacy is enormous. I sat in the town council meeting last week and they were looking at their short-term rental ordinance. And I'll tell you, it was, it was a very long discussion, and it wasn't even about making monumental changes to their existing. It was about making small kind of adjustments here and there. So I, I share that because this is the work that all of us are going to be sort of tasked with to make some of these things kind of move forward. And I think we would all agree, there's not a one fix. So I think housing for us is going to be across many avenues. I think we're going to look at, you know, if somebody's got a great idea for a four-unit duplex that we could do on a half acre, like, we're going to be, we're going to be brokering a lot of those kinds of things. Community education and outreach is absolutely pivotal. I have sat through so many meetings. I have gotten so many emails from folks who say, Lisa, this is really what should happen. You should tax these people, subtax those people, you should put rent controls in place. And I went, yep, those are all great ideas. And a lot of the times, the answer is, we can't do it because those are things our municipalities don't have the legal control to do. So this is where I think on an advocacy level and really on community outreach, education, conversation, every step of the way. We have two things that are coming up. I know they are in the packet, but we're planning out quarterly both community discussions and then community workshops. So it's a combination of getting folks comfortable with some of the housing topics that we're, that we're bringing forward. We have a session on Thursday night on tax credits. Taos community, the Taos community has not, we have not taken advantage of tax credits. And that's something we realize has to be part of this, this big mosaic puzzle. So there's a lot of that work that's happening simultaneously as, as we move this stuff forward. I did put in, the next two slides are kind of like, this is the, you know, if you're a data geek, you love it. If you're not, you kind of look at it and go, what? This really, again, we're not making up numbers. So this is stuff that comes out of HUD. These numbers are calculated every year. So this, these next couple of pages of graphs, they'll get updated every year. It just gives us the price point to say, what are we, what are we looking for? If you look at the homeownership reference charts, I'm just going to pull a number off. Family of four at one hundred and twenty percent of area median income, it's got an income of about seventy-seven thousand dollars. We can take that number and then overlay it with what we know is probably the price point for a family of four that they can reasonably afford in a mortgage. And I can tell you, we don't have the inventory if we look at that number. So this is where we're constantly trying to figure out, how do we add more of those layers to the cake to kind of to lessen that, that gap for folks? The next slide is, is just a reminder, actually, the next, next slide, the next one, Taos. This has the overview of both Taos County's Affordable Housing Plan and the town of Taos's Affordable Housing Plan. We took these right out of your, your documents. These were approved by both entities in June of two thousand twenty. So again, we took not just the data around what's median income and what do we have in terms of housing. We also looked at both town and county plans and said, let's make sure there's alignment. So if you look through this, there are eight that Taos County identified in June of two thousand twenty. And I hope you see that we've got things that are on this list that are embedded in that plan. So we're trying to not just do a one-off kind of thing and say, we think we've figured it out. This is the work of government that has come forward in your own ways and said, this is what we want to work on. So this becomes part of that, the alignment plan with it as well. The next two slides are mostly for the public. We do have a nonprofit community conversation that I'm hosting tomorrow morning. This is, we had great input from our nonprofit community when all of this work started. So this is really just a way to encourage them to come in, to introduce what we're working on with this plan. Where I see our nonprofit and faith communities really participating is when we get to that space of homebuyer education classes being ready to be introduced. Those are going to be the groups that I go out to to say, help us get the seats filled and help us figure out who those community members are that can attend. The next one is an open is an open meeting. It will be held here. I want to thank the county for just continuing to, one, give me office space and two, to let a lot of this community discussion happen. So as I mentioned before, the affordable housing tax credit is the topic for our first community workshop, and that will be Thursday. I've had several people ask if we can have that taped. I'll just let you know, I'm in conversation with True Kids One. We're, we're building that grant contract out for them to be able to do that into the future. But they have their open house exactly the same night, so they won't be doing it on Thursday. This is the work, and this is, I, again, it's the work for all of us. I would like to, again, just say thank you. I'm still working two days a week at the town, and I'm up in the office upstairs on Wednesdays and Thursdays. I think it's working out very, very well. I love being here. It makes a lot of the conversation easy, that I can call Rachel or Andy and say, hey, I got five minutes. I got a really big question. So I think it's creating sort of some of that, just that easy show and sharing of information. So I'm not feeling any strong push to find another location. I will say, the other part I do want to point out is on that strategy snapshot, if you look at those kind of pages twenty-eight through thirty, if you look at the column that says program cost, that's the cost for Taos Housing Partnership to do that service, to do that work in community. So the operating budget for Taos Housing Partnership is pretty much embedded in this work if we look at it over a three-year plan. Part of what we're looking at is figuring out how everybody brings their pieces of funding to this greater effort. If you just look at the launch pre-development fund, we're looking at a three-year investment of six hundred thousand dollars. If you added up all of these columns, I will tell you right now, Lisa O'Brien is the Executive Director of Taos Housing Partnership, is not going to raise all of that money. So this really is about how we're all kind of bringing our resources to the table and hopefully Taos Housing Partnership is in that mechanism role to really be kind of the conduit, program manager, project leader in some form or capacity. So I am actively, I'll tell you, I hate the word fundraising. I'm actively doing advancement work. The money that is secure is the money that the town and the county both allocated in that joint resolution that I believe was signed in February. That's taking care of the executive director's salary for a couple of years. I am securing funds at this point from our programmatic or philanthropic partners in the state to get some of this stuff up and running. So when I say implementation, there's money that has to, that has to come in for us to get that work started. So that's really where I'm working deeply right now as we kind of get into this last quarter of two thousand twenty-three. That was a lot. I do stand for questions. I know that we will be needing later to kind of talk through more specific details of the kind of the partnership relationship between Taos Housing Partnership and the county, but I'm certainly open to any questions right now.
Thank you very much, Lisa. Really appreciate your focus on foundation building, on putting the program, programmatic pieces in place, and especially on a thoughtful approach that's based in data and research. This, it's exciting because this, this is work that has to be done, and the way that it's coming together and being built up means that it's work that can continue for the next five years, ten years, twenty-five years beyond and independent of whoever is sitting in this building in any seat, and same for the town, like, this is, and that was the intent, right? When we partnered up with the town to try to get this off the ground, it's like, this should be something that continues. The work continues regardless of, of who's in what role. So we appreciate your work setting that up because the conversation has to continue. So thank you very much. Commissioners, questions or comments for Lisa?
No questions, but I just want to say, great work, Lisa. I, I can't say it any better than Commissioner Brush has already said it, but, you know, I do know that your professionalism just really keeps us on track, structured very well. And so with, for that reason, I know that we're going to be very successful going forward and making sure this is something that will continue on. So thank you for your work.
Thank you. Thank you, Commissioner V. Hill, and thank you for your work on the pre-development fund because that is those LOIs, those letters of interest. I know that's a big review job, and it's a lot of extra meetings on an already very busy schedule. So we appreciate your voice and your expertise being at the table there. Thank you. Vice Chair Romero?
Yes, Lisa, thank you for your work. How much collaboration is there or is there anticipated to be with developers, contractors, home builders, even individual home builders? Because they're the ones that actually build a house.
You are right. I am not going to be pouring the foundation. Yes, that's all part of this, this work. I think the, the other piece to remember is that Taos Housing Partnership is not going to be the planning department. Like, I, I have this role to kind of try and be the sort of matchmaker on some of these heart, these bigger pieces structurally. When it gets to that, yes, there will be, if there are RFPs or RFQs or sort of that sort of level that will go out into community, because obviously, yes, we're going to need developers and builders at the table. I think the other piece that we're looking at is how do we help figure out what those incentives are? So what is, you know, if we looked at a, I'm going to make up numbers, don't quote me, this is what's happening. If we looked at a, you know, a sixty-unit development that was moving forward, is there a way to engage that developer or builder with, hey, can we do a twenty percent, twenty percent set aside to meet this income level? And then how can we help figure out who those people are going to come in, who those people are to come in? So that the builder, developer knows they've got a pipeline of individuals who are ready to purchase and can meet that need. That's where those conversations are going to come in. There are still development conversations that will happen out of the both planning departments that have nothing to do with Taos Housing Partnership. So this is not any way, an attempt to kind of cram it all into this housing work. This is really the way to kind of say, how are we going to figure out some of these more complicated issues around? around mortgage down payment and, and the homebuyer education classes, which right now, there's not an entity that's providing that work or service in, in our region. So yes, there will be conversations with developers, and that's some of what the LOI brought forward. We had folks that were kind of new to conversations. So I think that's what this is creating, is another way for the door to be opened. It's another door.
Thank you.
Thank you, Vice Chair Romero. Any further questions or comments for Lisa?
Okay. Thank you for the time, thank you for the work. And as just as I know, I'll just say, I'm, I'll be back in a quarter, probably, if not beforehand. Any questions, don't hesitate to call. Again, I'm upstairs on Wednesday and Thursday, and it's really good on the days that I don't forget to bring my office key. But thank you for Brent letting me in this morning, so, thank you. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Lisa, thank you very much. Great information. Okay. This takes us to item twelve on our agenda, which is the Consent Agenda. We have today items A through, it looks like D? No, A through J. Commissioners, is, are there any items on the Consent Agenda that you would like pulled for comments, questions, or discussion? And if not, I would entertain a motion to approve the Consent Agenda, items A through J, as presented.
Motion to approve Consent Agenda as presented.
Thank you, Commissioner Mascarenas, is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Commissioner Vehill. Madam Clerk, if you could please call the vote.
Commissioner Romero?
Yes.
Commissioner Vehill?
Yes.
Commissioner Mascarenas?
Yes.
Vice Chair Romero?
Yes.
Chair Brush?
Yes, thank you very much. Our Consent Agenda is approved. Item thirteen on our agenda this morning, Resolutions and Ordinances. We have thirteen A, which is Discussion, Consideration, and Approval of Resolution Number Two Thousand and Twenty-three dash forty-two, a resolution authorizing and directing publication of the title, a general summary, and a time, date, and meeting place for discussion, consideration, and action upon proposed amendment of ordinance two thousand and eighteen dash three, our open burn policy in Touse County. And I know this might look and sound a little bit familiar, but Mr. Harmio, maybe you can walk us, walk us through why we have, why we have this on our agenda today.
Thank you, Chair of Members of the Commission. At the last commission meeting, you approved a resolution directing staff to publish in the Touse News a title, general summary, and time and date of the commission meet, when the commission would decide on ordinance two thousand and eighteen dash three, the open burn policy that our farm marshal presented on at the last meeting. There was a mistake in the public notice that went to the newspaper, so thus, we're having to redo a resolution on there. So there was a date and time that was missing from the publication.
Thank you, Brent, that clarifies why we're looking at this again. So we're really just looking to approve the same resolution with the corrected date and time, and that date and time is November seventh, two thousand and twenty-three. So at our November seventh regular commission meeting is when this ordinance will be heard. So we're just approving that date and time, November seventh, nine AM. Commissioners, what are your wishes? Move to approve? Okay.
Second.
Thank you, we have a motion from Commissioner Vehill and a second from Vice Chair Romero. Madam Clerk, if you would please call the vote.
Commissioner Romero?
Yes.
Commissioner Vehill?
Yes.
Commissioner Mascarenas?
Yes.
Vice Chair Romero?
Yes.
Chair Brush?
Yes, thank you very much. Resolution two thousand and twenty-three dash forty-two is passed. Okay, item fourteen on our agenda, Contracts, Agreements, MOUs, and Bids. We have first fourteen A, which is Discussion, Consideration, and Decision Regarding the Purchase of Replacement Split Air System for MIS through Honeywell Using GSA Contract. And with us, we have Ms. Elsa Vehill, our Chief Procurement Officer. Hi again, Elsa.
Good morning, Chairwoman Commission. Before you is information in regards to the purchase of the replacement split air system for the MIS department, which is our server room. It is vital that we get a reliable cooling system in there since we've actually been handling off and on the issues we've had in there with that cooling system since COVID started. So this is, this is to actually get that purchase approved due to it's over a sixty thousand dollar threshold. We will be using the GSA contract, and they did give us a quotation for that. I don't have it in front of me, I forgot it upstairs, but I know it's about seventy-nine, eighty thousand, around there somewhere. So I am just asking for approval of this purchase.
Seventy-five thousand, seventy-three dollars.
There you go.
Thank you. Commissioners, what are your wishes regarding item fourteen A, which is regarding the purchase of replacement split air system for MIS through Honeywell using our GSA contract?
Move to approve.
Thank you, Commissioner Vehill, I'll go ahead and second that. Madam Clerk, if you could please call for the vote.
Commissioner Romero?
Yes.
Commissioner Vehill?
Yes.
Commissioner Mascarenas?
Yes.
Vice Chair Romero?
Yes.
Chair Brush?
Yes. Okay, that contract's approved, thank you very much. Fourteen B is Discussion, Consideration, and Decision Regarding Giving Authority to the County Manager to Sign the Contract for Honeywell for the Touse County MIS Replacement Shiller. Ms. Vehill?
Currently, right now, the, it is important that we get this contract going, but we are asking authority for the county manager to sign. The contract itself is currently being drafted upstairs and legal. As soon as we can get this moving forward, we don't want to lose any time since winter is coming. Honeywell wants to get up on the roof and get things done as soon as possible by removing the old one and putting in the new one. So hence why we're asking to give authority to the county manager to sign off on these contracts once they are completed and executed and obviously approved here at this meeting.
Thank you, Elsa. Commissioners, any questions for Ms. Vehill? If not, I would entertain a motion regarding giving authority to the county manager to sign the contract for Honeywell for the Touse County MIS Replacement Shiller.
Move to approve.
Thank you, Commissioner Vehill. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Vice Chair Romero. Madam Clerk, if you could please call the vote.
Commissioner Romero?
Yes.
Commissioner Vehill?
Yes.
Commissioner Mascarenas?
Yes.
Vice Chair Romero?
Yes.
Chair Brush?
Yes. Okay. Authority is approved, thank you very much. Fourteen C is our next item, which is Discussion, Consideration, and Decision Regarding the Purchase of EBI Upgrade to the Latest Version and DDC Control Upgrade for the County Complex, which encompasses detention center, courthouse, and administration through Honeywell, again, using our GSA contract.
Again, this is an upgrade that has not happened and needs to happen. Unfortunately, it is very pricey due to the system we do have in place, which is environmentally controlled. So these upgrades would actually help with, with not just the cooling area, but the heating area within all three buildings that is desperately needed. This was something that was brought to my attention, and therefore, that's why I put it on the agenda for Discussion, Consideration, Decision, and Approval.
Thank you, one more time. Commissioners, what are, do you have any questions about item fourteen C regarding purchase of EBI upgrade to the latest version and DDC control upgrade for our complex? And if there are no comments or questions, I would entertain a motion to approve.
Motion to approve.
Thank you, Miguel, is there a second? Thank you, Commissioner Mascarenas. Madam Clerk, if you could please call the vote.
Commissioner Romero?
Yes.
Commissioner Vehill?
Yes.
Commissioner Mascarenas?
Yes.
Vice Chair Romero?
Yes.
Chair Brush?
Yes. Okay, one more down, Elsa, thank you. Item fourteen D, Discussion, Consideration, and Decision Regarding Giving Authority to the County Manager to Sign the Contract for Honeywell of the, for the EBI upgrade to the Latest Version and DDC Control Upgrade for our complex.
Again, same, same situation as in letter B. We're asking to give authority to the county manager to sign off on the contract once it's completed and executed in order to pursue this upgrade as soon as possible before winter hits.
Thank you very much. Commissioners, what are your wishes regarding fourteen D, giving authority to our county managers to sign that contract with Honeywell?
Motion to approve.
Thank you, Vice Chair Romero, I'll go ahead and second. Madam Clerk, if you could please call the vote.
Commissioner Romero?
Yes.
Commissioner Vehill?
Yes.
Commissioner Mascarenas?
Yes.
Vice Chair Romero?
Yes.
Chair Brush?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, getting through our work. Item fifteen is our County Managers Report and Matters. Thank you, Brent, we'll start with fifteen A, Update to the County Commission on Various Items Affecting Touse County.
Thank you, Chair, Members of the Commission. Thank you for approving those three, four contracts. EBI for, I asked Jason, did they, did Elsa cover what EBI meant? So it's a environmental building information system, so it's how we can monitor the different building components. And so there is going to be a lot of money that we're going to be investing into our infrastructure that's overdue, and there's also a point where, over the next few meetings, we'll be coming with some other building improvements, like the water softeners, and we're looking at the boilers. So we've been in this building, these buildings, twelve years, so it's already that time. So over the next couple of meetings, we'll be seeing a lot more agenda requests like this for building improvements, and Jason and staff are working hard on this. Mr. Frost, everybody's on it as well. I'd like to start by thanking Jason for, he pulled together, well, we're, calls the RFI, it's Request for Information for Solid Waste. So we've been tasked with putting together this RFI for a year out. This company that's going to do the solid waste rate assessment for us, and we're trying to get that before our billing cycle. So this will determine what our solid rate waste fee is going to be for next calendar year and going forward. And then we're also looking to determine the recycling rate as well. So not only Jason, but Elsa's put together a lot of information, Malesia, Deborah, Edward, Lorenzo. So Jason was tasked with putting it all together, and so there was a lot that went into it. And so I want to thank the whole team for putting that together. The company will be on site in a couple of weeks to do some interviews with key staff. Our internal auditors will be here October sixteenth. They should be here for four days. Again, I'd like to thank Ms. Vehill for working hard of submitting the, the documents as we wrap up getting all the documents over to the internal auditors. So, so they'll be here on October sixteenth. The chair and vice chair are usually attend what's called an entrance conference. So we've scheduled that for the afternoon of October sixteenth. Our vacancy rate through the end of September, we're at fifty-eight vacant positions for a vacancy rate of twenty-one percent. I would like to remind the commission, and we'll be getting that, I noticed a potential quorum, that the community schools meeting in Quest, the next community schools meeting is going to be in Questa on Wednesday, October eleventh, at three thirty PM. The school hasn't given us the exact location, but we'll get that, and we'll get that to you guys as soon as possible. The Regional Transit District, Mr. Madrid attended a meeting for winter service. The Blue Bus is looking to do extra routes up to the ski valley during the winter season. So Mr. Madrid participated in a meeting with RTD, Town of Touse, Village of Tuskegee, Ski Valley and ourselves regarding the winter service transportation. We're going to need to sign a memorandum of agreement. The total amount for the winter service is approximately one hundred and ninety-six thousand dollars, with RTD contributing ninety-five thousand, two hundred and forty-seven thousand. The remaining amount of approximately one hundred and two thousand will be divided equally between the county, the Village of Tuskegee Valley, and the Town of Touse. We would use this money from lodgers tax. So theoretically, as an example, folks staying at Don Fernando or any of the other hotels in Touse can jump on the Blue Bus and go up to the ski valley and ski, and then come down. There's various routes throughout the day, so we'll give you the route schedule when we're doing the MOA. And there's some years that this is run and others that hasn't because of COVID. And so now, we've been trying to get this up and running again. We got word yesterday that Touse County is one of eighteen projects statewide that's funded from the Creative Industries Grant Award. This is through the Economic Development Department. I was just thinking, before I got up here, that the new buzzword that you're kind of hearing throughout New Mexico, and they have a creative industry, creative industries division now under the Economic Development Department, is creative industries. And when we interviewed Ms. Stern, she talked about creative industries, and I can't remember exactly what my follow-up question was, and she explained what creative industries is. So we hired somebody that's in that space already, and Ms. Stern has presented nationally on the creative industries economy. So I was glad to know that we already have somebody in that, in that space, and I thank you, Jessica. And I guess we got ourselves lucky that we found somebody in that space. So like I mentioned, Touse County is one of eighteen projects statewide. Touse County will work in partnership with the Touse Arts Council, Touse County Chamber of Commerce, and the Touse Center for Arts to conduct this as in a two-part project that develops local creative entrepreneurs through business development training workshops, provides educational and work-integrated learning opportunities for young people, high school age, and recent graduates. The grant award is one hundred thousand dollars. I don't know, Jessica, if there's anything that you wanted to add, I'm putting you on the spot.
Thank you, Brent. One of the things that I'm most excited about in this grant project, which will be conducted between January and June, is that we wrote into the budget stipends for equitable access to these training workshops and internships. And what that means is that we budgeted for, to cover transportation costs, childcare, elder care, whatever kinds of support people need to be able to do business training and development. So that's just one of the, the key things about offering these training workshops that I'm really excited about. And then the youth internships, work-integrated learning opportunities are designed to provide capacity-building opportunities for our cultural institutions, as well as that, that learning opportunity and professional development for young people. Thanks.
All right, thank you, Jessica. We may need to have a special meeting to approve a couple of contracts. We'll let you know, just about myself will sit down with and evaluate and make sure that the clerk's office is able to accommodate us. So there's a couple of contracts for sandbar that we're trying to do some striping on before winter really sets in. And I am done with my report. Is there any questions for me? And I am going to turn this over in a moment to Clerk Montoya, and I'll answer any questions.
Okay, thank you, Brent. Commissioner Vehill, a question? Thank you, a couple. So in regards to the RTD and bus routes going to Tuskegee Valley, how long have we been working or, or I guess, participating in that endeavor? Because it sounded like we've been doing it for a while.
We've been doing it for about four or five years, and during COVID, hadn't participated. They would have done it last year, and I think when Mr. Mortolano was here, he had mentioned that they couldn't find a driver last year. That's the only reason it didn't happen, is they couldn't find drivers. And I think still this year, and maybe Commissioner Mascarenas knows this more than me, I think they're still struggling to find drivers for this year. It's, it's the weekend drivers that they're struggling to find.
Okay, so it looks like we've secured drivers for this route, and?
I think they're still struggling for the weekend drivers.
Okay, and then one hundred and two thousand, you said, between three entities, is that correct?
Correct.
Just getting the numbers right. Okay, thank you. And then in regards to the grant that Ms. Jessica Stern just spoke about, maybe she can just kind of help me understand what exactly that grant is going to do. Again, I know you said workshops, so can you give me some examples of what we're going to see?
Sure, I'd be happy to. So the way that we built the, the grant proposal, which will need to go out to RFP for the administration of the grant, is the, the two-part project, one to offer up to three professional development workshops for artists or creative entrepreneurs who are interested in growing or developing their own personal business. for artists or creative entrepreneurs who are interested in growing or developing their own personal business around a creative practice. I think we'll be able to have capacity for 60 to 70 individuals, again, who want to grow their, their business. And then the internship piece, which is kind of project two within the whole project, is designed to place young people in cultural institutions across the county, specifically around digital and technical literacy. But it's a paid internship opportunity. It's, it's a job at arts and culture organizations. And again, that's designed to give people professional development experience. So what it's like to actually work in a cultural organization while building the capacity of that organization. So that we're strengthening both the business entities that are creativity and artistic based here in Touse County, as well as our nonprofit organizations.
Thank you.
The way I like to think about it is, we probably know, we probably even have family members that are very creative and can draw, do t-shirts. And that's really their, their passion and is, is how do you make it a business and follow your, your passion? So this is where these workshops will, will help them kind of develop it into a business versus it just being a hobby and try to make a living at it as well.
Well, if I may mention that, and I can give you the, the names on. Most recently, I was contacted in regards to a group of folks that, that locals that often don't get involved in some of the arts events. And they are trying to kick off, I guess, something in that, in that realm. And so some of these individuals might actually be, fit really well into this.
Right.
Thank you.
And I'm going to turn it over to Clark Montoya to give us an update. As you all know, our next election is on November 7.
Can I just ask for a second? Were there any further questions for Brent on, on, on his update?
Yes. What was the vacancy rate at the county on, in January?
I would need to double check. I do have it in my emails and I'm sure Ms. Elam's listening to us and she'll text it to me in a moment.
I was thinking 25, 26?
No, we were probably above 30%. I think when you guys started, it was about 32%. And then we came down to 28, 27, and we hovered there for a little bit. But like I said, I'm sure Ms. Elam's going to text me that number in a few minutes.
That's close enough, yeah. Yeah, congratulations, it's coming down.
Yeah, we're getting there.
Yeah, that's good news and good progress. So thank you, Brent, for the report. And thanks to both you and Jessica for the explanation of the creative industries grant from the Economic Development Department. That's super exciting. So thank you. Okay, Madam Clerk?
Good morning. So as you all know, we do have an election coming up. Our early voting will start Tuesday, October 10th. So it'll be in here, eight to five. And that is also the day that absentee ballots can be issued. If you, we do have sample ballots that if anybody has a question on who they'll be voting for, because there are various races on there and it's determined where you live. But you can look on nnboat.org and put in your information. And you could see a sample ballot of that there. And then October 21st, that's a Saturday, that's when the alternate early voting sites will open. And that's in Questa, Piñasco and El Prado. And that'll be from 10 to 6. And then the last day for early voting will be November 4th. And that's all I got.
Thank you very much for a very important update. Commissioners, any questions for Madam Clerk? Okay, no, thank you, Val.
Ms. Elam said it was 27% in January.
Thank you, Ms. Elam, for that quick response. So this takes us to item 15B, which is our veteran cemetery update. And with us, we have our construction manager, Mr. Richard Sanchez. Good morning, Richard.
Good morning, Madam Chair, Commissioners. Good to be here. We've got the latest video overflight from two weeks ago. What you're seeing right there are the foundation, for, the foundation excavations for the administration maintenance building at the veteran cemetery. This flyover is kind of polish on polish. You'll see, you get to see the burial area. It flies through the chapel area. Our roses are blooming. We're starting our, we've started our 14-day burn down on our sprinkler system. What that is, we have to test it and make sure that we have no faults for 14 days continuously. We've also scheduled the initial winterization for November 1st. No matter what, we're doing it November 1st. That way they'll train us and we'll also get winterized. And so next year, if there's any issues, it's on them to do the repair work at no charge. Those are the column bearing walls. You can see them capped. We have the gravel area for flowers. We're starting to get the lettering up for identification of where your remains will be. It's just like the national cemetery. You have, it's an alphanumeric, A, B, C, D rows, 1, 2, 3, 4, 5. So you'll have 1, 5, 10, 15, 20, 25. There's the flying through the chapel, looking out at the burial area, the crypt area, or mow strips leading up to the chapel. And like I said, it's just a nice show of, of what's going on. What is going on right now that you don't see in those excavations already? We have our plumbers and electricals putting in the underground raceways, all the piping for the public restrooms, the employee areas. We'll have our design engineers here on Thursday to do inspection of the underground electrical and the underground mechanical. And then we'll start covering it up and do density tests and start working on pouring footing concrete, stem walls, prepping for the concrete. Hopefully we'll have, have that all completed by the end of this month of October. Get the concrete in before winter settles in. And that way we can continue with construction. It's a steel constructed building. So other than days when it's raining or snowing, we should just keep moving forward to completion at springtime next year. That's about it on the veteran cemetery. If there's any questions?
Thank you, Richard.
Madam Chair, I actually was out there about a week and a half. I saw the contractor excavations and, and walked, walked what the video showed essentially. So I actually could have been in the video. But, but as you know, I like to do site visits. So great, thank you.
Thank you, Vice Chair. We'll have to watch that again and look for you. Commissioner Vehill?
Yeah, just a quick question in regards to the concrete. So I was asked by a public member whether or not we were having issues with concrete. I just wanted to clarify, we're on schedule. We have no issues. Concrete is scheduled if everything goes well.
Well, there are concrete issues on all our projects on, in Touse. And not only just us, just in general. There is so much construction going on in Touse, private, government, Ski Valley, that, yeah, some scheduling is, some, some projects are delayed, sometimes days, sometimes weeks for concrete. And then the rain hasn't, we need the rain, so I'm not going to complain about it, but it does delay concrete work. And so everybody's schedules get pushed back. Currently, the only place we are waiting a little bit, and we've got them scheduled, the courthouse, which I'll update you on, we're waiting for, we were waiting for inspection first. We got the inspection. Now we're waiting for concrete and pump availability. Hopefully, tentatively, the porch is scheduled to be poured on Thursday of this week. That'll let it set. And then portal construction will start the following week or soon after. And Mobile Matanza, which is further on down the road, is another one. We're waiting on, we wait, wait for inspections. We're waiting on concrete. And, and hopefully this week will be also another one. The one consolation for us is, even though we have multiple general contractors, most of them are using the same subcontractor out of Albuquerque, who has scheduled weeks worth of concrete. And then is just moving it around depending on whether it's UNM, whether it's Touse County Courthouse, whether it's Mobile Matanza, whether it's the veteran cemetery. So they're shuffling. We're lucky in that respect. It does give you an idea of how limited the workforce is. That we have one subcontractor that's working on multiple governmental contracts here in Touse County for multiple contractors. And so like I said, it's, it's a blessing, but it's also, it shows you how tight the labor market is right now.
If I may, does our concrete come from Touse? Is it a?
All the concrete is from Touse.
It's not like, we couldn't possibly, it would be crazy, right?
Yeah, no. You have been seeing, I think it's Duke City Aggregate or somebody. Those were trucks and drivers that were leased by Perovitz Properties from Touse Gravel because they just couldn't handle the volume with the ski valley and everything else. So the concrete really wasn't coming from Albuquerque. It was coming from Touse.
Right, okay, thank you.
Thank you. Any further questions on veteran cemetery update? Okay, hearing none. Then, Richard, if you're ready to go on to item 15C, our historic county courthouse update.
Historic county courthouse. Slow and steady. Like I said, like I mentioned earlier, inspections, because all our projects, we don't self-inspect. We do have our building who inspects all the private stuff. But all our projects are inspected by the state. State, like everybody else, has had issues with staffing. And so some of our inspections have been delayed a little bit. Some of them are, but they're catching up now. Historic courthouse, the portal footings and torreon footings were, and reinforcing steel were all inspected last week. Concrete is tentatively, I spoke to the superintendent this morning. It's tentatively scheduled for Thursday morning, so we can get trucks and pumps. Concrete's available. Now we need to know if we got a pump truck. So, but we have one local vendor that does pumping. And then there's several in Santa Fe and Albuquerque. And so they're working on making sure that somebody's available. Once the concrete's done and the portal starts, then we can start moving into the west alley because that won't be our only access. We're not, we won't have to access the portal as much. And we can do it from the front, not from the side. We can start with our over excavations and everything, preparing for our sidewalks and elevator that goes in, in the west side of the, of the complex. Electricity, we're still working with Kit Carson, with our subcontractor to get pricing for the final change order. It is going to be a change order because initially we had a transformer next to the building. Well, the transformer that's, and removing the transformer was there. That one has to stay there for our neighbors. All our neighbors are single-phase facilities. We will be a three-phase facility because of our elevators and future chillers and equipment that's coming into the courthouse.
Thank you, thank you very much. Any questions for Richard on the courthouse update? All right, then let's move on to 15D, our general construction update.
General construction. We have lots of things going on. I'll start off on the north side. Costilla Fire Department is, we're getting an address. We've started design work on the fire department. We have to get electricity up there, telephone, everything's on, we're, we're on the wrong side of the street. So we've got, first thing is, street address, well, septic system, infrastructure, where we work on design and hopefully put it out to bid next spring and be working forward on that. Fire departments in general, we have more of the storage tanks coming in. As a matter of fact, we expect the water storage tank for the Lama Fire Department to come in in November. And so we'll be excavating and starting that fire, that fire hydrant installation probably mid to late November. Saros is in place and seems to be functioning well. El Rita, which is in Saro proper, well, not Saro proper, but on the highway. We've had some issues with it. They've been working on it. Think we might have it worked, the snags worked out, but we're still working on that. Amaya Fire Department has their storage tank in place and appears to be working fine. Will staff, myself and Gabberto will be up there working on a parking lot and handicap parking. Now that that's all complete, we'll have some material delivered. La Senegal, our senior center for Questa, concrete's in place. We're waiting for the, the second phase of funding. The proposal and updated pricing is coming from our contractor. We should have the funding and the grant agreements and everything, line and budget, hopefully by the end of this month. And that way we can continue with the construction, which, like I said, our concrete's in place, our utilities are in. So as long as the funding comes in, we'll continue and we'll hopefully be complete by springtime also on that project. Saro well at the senior community center is up, has been up and running. And they're happy as, as can be that they have new water heaters, new pumps, new pressure tanks, new handicap bathroom and a brand new well. Not a well, but a new pump and updated well facility. The casing and everything has been improved to meet the health standards required by the state engineer's office. Mobile Matanza. Mobile Matanza is, we're expecting delivery of the new cut and wrap facility the week of the 23rd, tentatively on the supplier and having crane large enough to unload the, the units. And one more, Piñasco Community Center. It's staff, administration, we're having, we've had our design team up there to look at it, start working on design. Final, even schematic designs are still pending as we work out details between all the parties that are going to be involved in the usage of the Piñasco Community Center.
Thank you, Richard. That's, that's a lot. Commissioners, questions? Commissioner Vehill?
Yes, I'm sorry if you mentioned it, and I'm going to ask, the Ag Center?
I'm sorry.
The Ag Center?
Oh, I'm sorry, I forgot. I knew you'd have the Ag Center. Ag Center, lights are going in place, classrooms are being worked on. We're moving forward, trying to get it all completed up. We, staff will probably do some of the grade work on the outside. I don't know if we'll get to it this fall. I hope we do. It's kind of scheduling with Public Works. Construction Administration will be helping Public Works on some bridge repairs in the near future. We have the material. And so we'll be helping them with that. We'll also be, like I said, up at Amaya, working on some handicap issues and parking lot issues. But yeah, the Ag Center is working, is moving along. Sheet rock's going in. Lights are in place. Gabberto is going down to, to start looking at, see how, if, if we've got, if we need to adjust the placement on them. But we, the arena should be, everything is moving well there.
That sounds good. Great, thank you. Thank you. Thank you, Richard. That's so many projects. I don't know, like, how do you and your team keep track of all of the projects?
I don't know. It's a God-given talent, it just kind of sticks in my brain and we just keep it going.
Well, thank you, appreciate the, I appreciate the progress report and all the work behind it. Thank you. Okay, this takes us to item 15E, which is a first quarter 2023-24 planning department update. And with us, we have Rachel Romero, our planning director. Good morning, Rachel.
Good morning. Good morning, Madam Chair, Commissioners, Mr. Adam Mew. I believe we have a slide presentation. There we go. So I come before you today to give a first quarter update of the planning department. And we can go ahead and start on the next slide. Basically, just a quick update of the types of permits that are issued by the planning department. We have three separate divisions within the planning department. The Building Safety Division is in charge of issuing all different types of building permits, which include demolition permits, excavation, solar, new builds, additions, alterations for both residential and commercial construction, including accessory structure buildings, which include garages, sheds, things of that nature. In the addressing division, they typically issue address verifications as well as floodplain determinations. And in the planning division, that's where it gets a little more complex. And we have several different permits that will be issued, which include home occupation permits, cannabis permits, special use permits, claims of exemptions, summary subdivisions, subdivisions, PUDs, so on and so forth. Next slide, please. For the first quarter, a total of 82 building permits have been issued. And comparing that to last year, for the first quarter, 118 permits were issued. Looking at it as a year-to-date total, a total of 253 permits have been issued for 2023 and 285 for 2022. Of all of that, new residences include 90 for '23 and 107 for '22 for the total year, with 28 new residential permits in '23 and 37 for the first quarter of '22. Next slide, please. So those numbers look a little bit down as far as building permit-wise. But when we compare it in fees, we're kind of comparable from 20- compare it in fees, we're kind of comparable from twenty-two to now. As in the first quarter, it's a total of close to a hundred and fifty thousand in building permits that we've generated for the first quarter, and in twenty-two, it was just a little over a hundred and sixty thousand. But looking at it year-to-date, they're very comparable, as in twenty-three, we've collected four-hundred-and-fifty-thousand dollars in building permit fees, and in twenty-two, it's a little under four-hundred-and-thirty-five-thousand dollars. So fee-wise, we're right there. Permit numbers were a little low, and it could just be, and usually the market kind of fluctuates, so some years we're really high, and other years we kind of drop down a little bit, but then the next year it kind of picked back up, so I'm not too worried about that. Next slide, please. When we look at the inspections, we're pretty much right on the money year-to-date. Although for the first quarter in twenty-three, we had a total of four-hundred-and-sixty-one inspections that we've conducted in the first three months, and in twenty-two, it was four-hundred-and-forty-three, but year-to-date totals, twenty-three, there's one-thousand-one-hundred-seventy-seven, and in twenty-two, one-thousand-one-hundred-seventy-three. So we're over by four inspections for the year. And keep in mind that a majority of these inspections have all been done by one person. There's myself as the certified building official as well, and then we have our building inspector, which is Mr. Joseph Gonzalez, and Mr. Gonzalez is the one who's out there on a daily basis that's conducting a majority of the inspections. I'll go out and do the commercial inspections in the system with those inspections, and when he's gone, I tend to try to get out there and do a few of those inspections for him. But these days, my focus is more in office, handling more of the administrative work, so a majority, I would say, probably close to the thousand inspections have been done by Mr. Gonzalez, all on his own. So I applaud him for, for his efforts in that, and his artwork in that regard. Next slide, please. Code compliance, code compliance, we also have only one inspector, which is Mr. Larry Espinoza, and he works very hard at what he does. Not only does he handle complaints, but he also helps us with our residential zoning clearance site inspections. So he's very busy with handling those inspections on a daily basis, as well as trying to handle the code compliance matters for the entire county. And so for the first quarter of 2023, we had a total of seventeen, whereas in twenty-two, there was forty-four. These numbers are drastically different. These are only the cases that actually have a violation, and he's creating the case for this. These do not include all of the complaints that we receive that are found to be in compliance, and no violations found on the property. And so a total of fifty for the year for 2023, and for twenty-two, there's a hundred and nine.
Question, Rachel, that house that we were talking about in the Pinasco Valley, is that a code-compliance thing, or is that handled different?
That was also a code-compliance matter, so that would have been included in this, in these numbers, yes.
Commissioner V. Hill?
Okay, just.
I'm sorry. Give me that total number again, code compliance from twenty-three to twenty-two. The comparison, the final number?
Madam Chair, Commissioner V. Hill, twenty-three, the total number is fifty year-to-date, and twenty-twenty-two year-to-date is one-hundred-and-nine. So there's a little over fifty less compliance matters this year than there was last year.
Yeah.
Yes.
Yeah, I'm only asking because I have received some phone calls in regards to some concerns out there, and so maybe they're just coming my way now, but, and I know they eventually, which is what I do, is direct them to you all. But I thought I was seeing, hearing more this year than last year, so interesting.
Madam Chair, Commissioner V. Hill, that is correct, there's less this year. And unfortunately, during the time that I was preparing this, Mr. Espinoza was out of the office, so these numbers might be, might change because, due to the fact that we are still learning our new system in Excel, and Mr. Espinoza is still in the process of trying to learn the system and put those cases into the, into the system. And so I pulled these numbers off of the system and not his case files, paper files, and so these numbers can change. But this is a good number for us to play with, because I have noticed that compliance issues, oftentimes he goes out there and he doesn't have to create a case because it's a matter of, well, I didn't know that I needed a permit, and they come in right away and they pull the permit. So again, these are the cases that he's actually creating for next steps type of thing to get our legal department to assist us with us for those cases if need be, so.
Thank you, Rachel, for that. Vice Chair Romero, you had a question on this?
Yes, Rachel, a question on inspections. So, and, and I asked this kind of to give everybody a better idea of what's involved. But in September twenty-two, there were a hundred and twenty-nine, and September this year, a hundred and thirty-three. So my question is, how many inspections do you do on a house before it's complete?
Depending on the type of build that it is, but, you know, you can have, you have your footing foundation and slabs, so that could be either three separate inspections or one inspection if they do a monolithic placement. You have your framing inspection, and that can also be separated. You will do a sheeting inspection, so that way they can start covering up, or it can be inclusive of the framing inspection, and we inspect the entire framing. We could do a pocket roof inspection, which is also separate from the framing inspection, or inclusive, depending on the type of build it is. There could be a bond beam inspection, and then we have our exterior lat inspection, which is the prep to plaster, and drywall inspection, interior lat inspection if they're plastering the inside, and a final inspection.
Wow, that's about eleven-twelve. Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Vice Chair. If you want to keep on going through your presentation, Rachel, thank you very much.
Sure. So moving on to the next slide, please. In the Adressing Division, as I've mentioned, we have address verifications, floodplain determinations that are issued through, through that division, and typically, they work together when there is a building permit or a mobile home placement permit that's going to be issued. They also do address verifications and flooding determinations for some of our zoning clearance applications, whether it's a residential, well, always for the residential zoning clearance, but when it comes to commercial, we have several different types of zoning clearances. There's the commercial zoning clearance, there's the special use, there's the administrative, the major development, so on. And so those also receive a address verification as well as a floodplain determination while they're going through that process. And so for the first quarter of twenty-three, three-hundred-and-fifteen address verifications were issued, and in twenty-two, three-hundred-and-seventy-eight. And my apologies, I thought I had wrote down the year-to-date on these, but I don't have that information with me today. In the floodplain, in twenty-three, a hundred and thirty-five reviews were conducted, and one-hundred-and-sixty-three in twenty-two. And the maps prepared, typically, those also run with address verifications and the flooding determinations. In most cases, a map will not be issued if there's not an address verification or a wetland determination or flooding determination conducted. But oftentimes, or rarely, a customer will come into the office and say, I need help locating my property, all I have is a property owner number, or owner number, and rather than sending them down to the assessor's office, we'll assist them in that regard and pull it up on the map and, and give them a map for that. And so that's the reason for, for the differentials on that. So for the maps prepared in twenty-three, a hundred and ninety-eight maps were issued, and in twenty-two, two-hundred-and-twenty-three maps were issued in that regard. And oftentimes, we don't always give them a map of the property when we do these verifications as well, so that, that's the difference in the numbers there as well.
Rachel, could I ask you a quick question about what's here, especially given the beautiful and kind of startling photo that is there? Could you just talk a little bit about, and it can be super brief, but I'm just curious about the process of going through the floodplain or wetland determination? Like, what, what does that process look like?
Currently, Taos County does not have a floodplain manager. So if a property is found to be within a floodplain or within a wetlands area, well, I'll talk about the floodplain first, because it's, it's two different jurisdictions. In floodplain, we go through FEMA, so if there is a floodplain, if your property is within a floodplain area, you're going to go with FEMA, and you'll have to get an elevation certificate. And so you'll work with an engineer to help you with that elevation certificate, or you can apply for a Loma or a Lomar through FEMA to be able to take your property out of the floodplain if they feel that's appropriate. And once they give the approvals, then we can go ahead and move on. We do, we used to have a MOU through the town of Taos for their floodplain manager, but since then, the MOU has ceased, and so their, their manager does help us on occasion, but as far as helping us process permits, we have to go through FEMA through that. When it comes to the wetlands, that is handled through the U.S. Army Corps of Engineers, and they handle that slowly, so we have to get their approval, and they have to obtain their, the proper permits to be able to build within those areas.
Okay, thank you. And you, what you said just made me think of a follow-up question, which is like, have we in the past had a floodplain, floodplain manager, and are we supposed to, or should, should we? Just thinking about like all the things happening out there in, in our world, all of the various visions of disaster. Just wondering about, because I've, I've never met a floodplain manager before.
Madam Chair, that is correct. In the past, we have had several different floodplain managers. Unfortunately, I'm not sure that, I guess I can't say a reason why we don't have a floodplain manager at this point. I am speaking with Mr. Montoya, Eric Montoya, who is our real Adressing Supervisor, and seeing if he's interested in possibly becoming our next floodplain manager. There is a conference that's coming up now at the beginning of November, I believe, which can help him start preparing for that. And so that's a separate conversation that I would like to have with Mr. Adam Mew and Ms. Selem, to see if we can maybe possibly include that into his job description and, and have him become our next floodplain manager.
Thank you. I'm glad you've got your eye on that. Thank you very much. If you want to keep going.
Okay, moving on to the next slide, please. In the Planning Division, as I mentioned earlier, we have several different permits that we issue, and I've just highlighted the high-volume permits that we issue within this division, and the manufactured placement home, or, excuse me, manufactured home placement permits, that's a multiple. Twenty-five were issued last year versus twenty-seven for this year, with a total of fifty-four for this year and fifty-one for last year. So we're continuing the trend with the manufactured homes in being slightly higher versus the building permits, as I mentioned earlier, which is a little bit lower. And I think due to the cost and contractors being so busy, people are saying, let's just go out and, and buy a manufactured home rather than waiting and building, and that way it comes in quicker, we're able to move into our home quicker and whatnot. The home occupation permits, in twenty-three, we've issued a total of twenty, or, excuse me, twenty-nine for the first quarter. Twenty-nine for the year, my apologies, and the first quarter. Twenty-nine for the first quarter and seventy-nine for the entire year. This includes twenty-two short-term rentals for the first quarter, and a total of forty-nine short-term rentals for the first quarter. In twenty-two, there was twenty-six for the first quarter, with a total of sixty-nine for the entire year, with fifteen short-term rentals for the first quarter and a total of thirty-five for the entire year. And the cannabis producer permits, these are the micro-business, and there was one last year and six this year. The obvious reason on this is this is a brand-new ordinance and a brand-new regulation that's just got passed, and so last year, everybody was kind of getting the feel for it, what the state regulations were going to be, what was the county going to pass, how is all of this going to work. And so this year, we've got a little bit more people coming to, to the table on that. And so these are all just grow operations. We have yet to have a dispensary within the county unincorporated area, but we do have the potential of one person who's in the application process now of applying for a dispensary. So hopefully, everything will run smoothly with that, and we will have our first dispensary within Taos County here within the, probably early next year sometime, is my guess.
And you mentioned that those are the micro-businesses, right? So they're the small-scale growers?
Madam Chair, that is correct.
Thank you, Rachel.
Looking at the claim of exemptions, we have a total of twenty-five for twenty-two and a total of thirty-one for this year. The claim of exemptions include, there's thirteen different exemptions that you can apply for. The most common that people apply for are the lot splits and the family transfers. Now with the family transfers, we've been working with developers, trying to work with them on incentive, well, not incentives, but the possibility of working with summary subdivisions rather than going through family transfers, and those are incentives for us, because now they can give us the wider roads, trying to help them to connect to infrastructure when possible, you know, things of that nature, and through our efforts of the subdivision regulations that I'm going to speak about here shortly, that will also hopefully allow them to go through that summary subdivision process a lot more quickly and easier. So, moving on to the next slide, please. When it comes to the Planning Commission and the Board of Adjustment hearings, I'm happy to announce that we had our first in-person hearing, which was on July, or, excuse me, August thirty-first, and that was for the Planning Commission. Everything went smoothly, we had a couple of little hiccups, but for the most part, everything went, went really well. At that meeting, we had one case, and we heard a special use permit, and that was for the replacement of an existing cell tower. We also had a Planning and Zoning Commission in September, and that was for an RV park in Arroyo Seco. This was also a, I believe it was a code-compliance matter that they were unaware that they needed the proper permits. They came back, they applied for the special use permit, and now they're going to be in compliance, and I believe there's going to be a total of four spaces within that park for RVs. And those RVs will be placed there for any given time, whether it's a couple of weeks to a couple of months, or even up to a year or so. And so their intention is to rent it out more long-term rather than short-term to help with the traveling nurses and the construction workers that come into town for work and whatnot. So that's the audience that they're targeting for, for that park. We will have our first Board of Adjustment in-person hearing here later on this month, on October twenty-seventh. And during this first quarter, we have yet to have a Board of Adjustment meeting. The Board of Adjustment Commission usually hears variances and appeals on decisions of the planning director's decision. So their meetings are usually pretty rare, few and far between. And moving on to the next slide, please. The projects that we've been working on. The projects that we've been working on. As you know, Mr. Madrid has been working on and has received a grant for the comprehensive plan. We received a couple of proposals, and we were looking at those. We had some informal interviews with those individuals last week. We will be making our decision this week. And so hopefully, they will be informed of our decision later, by the end of this week or sometime next week, so that way we can start moving forward. Our intention is to have a new plan by June to meet the requirements of MFA. And that should be coming before you, I would say before maybe August, September. We have to have it closed out by late September, so that way it can be fully closed out by December. We're also working on the short-term rental ordinance, as you know. We are hoping to have a work study with the Board of County Commissioners later on this month, so you will be notified of that. Our land use regulations revisions, that is next on the project. I will be working with Ms. Tammy West, so that way we can send out RFPs to obtain a contract for that as well, as well as the subdivision regulations. Now, in-house, the Planning Department has been working on both of those ordinances and trying to clean those up a little bit to come up with ideas and things on what we see need to be changed, so that way it helps speed on the process when we obtain those contractors. As far as the subdivision regulations go, Mr. Patrick Chihue, our attorney, has also been helping us with those as well and cleaning up those subdivision regulations. The cannabis regulations, we have also been working on those with Ms. Corey. She's been helping us with those, although we've kind of dropped the ball on that a little bit and kind of put that on the back burner to work on some other stuff. But I'm hoping that we can pick up that again and, and bring that before you here within the next couple of months and get those revisions passed. The next slide. I believe that concludes my presentation, and I stand for any questions that you may have.
Thank you very much, Rachel, for a great presentation. It's pretty significant stuff that you're in charge of, so we appreciate it a lot. Commissioners, any further, I know we've asked as we've gone along, but any further questions for Rachel?
Other than, could you use more staff? I mean, I'm not offering, but just wondering, how's it, you know, how do you feel in regards to what, the amount of staff you have?
Chair, Commissioner Beale?
Is it enough for the capacity?
Yes, please, with emphasis. Our department is part of the affected of vacant positions. And I'm happy to announce that we have Ms. Paulina Fatiwa, who started last week, who is our newest planner. I believe we will be gaining a new building inspector, the Plans Examiner Inspector, which is an entry-level building inspector position. I believe he should be starting next week, here within the next few days. I'm hoping I'm working with HR, and hopefully that'll be here soon. We have a vacant certified building official position that's open. Once I get that filled, that'll alleviate a huge workload off my plate because I'm doing both the planning director and the building official duties, and so that's a huge workload. I could use more help with code enforcement, especially once the short-term rental ordinance is passed. We will definitely need more help with that. And possibly an administrative assistance would be beneficial for our department as well. More so, permit tech. And so what a permit tech does is do a lot of the intake on all of the permitting. And they could also assist with the administrative end for building permits with issuing certificates of occupancies, doing the reports, doing just all the day-to-day paperwork, filing, things of that nature. So those are also future conversations for, for Mr. Harameo, so.
Great, thank you for sharing that. Appreciate it.
Thank you for the question.
Any further questions for Rachel?
All right, then just, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Appreciate the presentation. Brent?
Madam Chair, members?
Building permits map, I can't remember exactly what it is, but it's within that page. And when you click on that, it gives you all the building permits, all the excavation permits, solar permits, all the permits that we issue. It also gives you the manufactured homes that have been placed. So it gives you everything, and it's updated monthly. So that is an active map that we frequently update, and that's, that's available for the public. And that's been something that we've had since probably early 2018.
Oh, great, didn't know that. Thank you for sharing that. Do you also, would you be able to just tell us briefly turnaround time? Because I think about one inspector, and my husband does construction, so I know that if you don't get those inspections when needed, it can really slow down a project. But I mean, one person can only do so much. So is, are we having any delays, any issues there in making sure that everyone's able to move forward?
Madam Chair, Commissioner Brus, that's another excellent question. And I'm happy to announce that our turnaround time for inspections is typically two to four days. Most often, we'll be there the next day. If it's a farther area, then you're looking at about one or two days. And if it's going to be greater than four days, we will call you and we'll let you know we're not able to get out there for this reason, and we'll be there this day.
Great, thank you.
So we like to keep in contact with our, our contractors, our homeowners, and we like to keep them notified of what's going on.
And if I could, I'll stop there, but if anything comes to mind, I will email you and send Brent also, I'll CC him.
Yes, I'm happy to help however I can. And please let me know if you ever have any questions or concerns.
Appreciate you. Thank you so much, Rachel.
And your team.
Any other questions for Rachel?
Thank you so much for the information and for giving us your time this morning. Really appreciate it.
Thank you, thank you for your time.
Okay, this takes us to Agenda Item 16, Commissioners Reports and Matters. 16A is new business to be considered at a future commission meeting. Commissioners, any, anything you'd like to make sure is on the radar? That isn't already probably on the radar? Then 16B, Commissioners Announcements. Any announcements before we get into our board reports? All right, then let's go ahead into 16C, our board or committee reports from the boards or committees that we serve on. Enchanted Circle Council of Governments, the ECOG, that was a meeting I was at on the, I believe, the 21st. And a couple of things came out of that. One, I don't know if folks are aware, there's a new Hilton Hotel going up. Like, when you go up toward Eagle Nest at the turnoff to Angel Fire, there's going to be like 120-room Hilton going up there, which was, came out of like our roundtable reports. So the mayor of Angel Fire shared that with us. She also shared, it was Mayor Mixon, that they were using a new, they were testing a new road surface that was supposedly going to hold up differently in winter. So I didn't get the name of it, but if anyone from that world on our team is interested, I will. But main point of conversation was their idea of the regional air service organization, which I know at one of our joint Town of Taos, Taos County meetings came up, like whether we form through a JPA, a regional board and organization, air service organization to kind of weigh in on routes and also then contribute and support financially like we've been asked to do in the past. So there was no, no decision was taken, but it was a topic of conversation about whether or not the region would be interested in forming such an organization. And then the last thing, just a brief update of like a heads up. I suppose this should be new business, what to expect in a, in a future commission meeting. We will need to reauthorize the JPA, the Joint Powers Agreement for the ECOG because it was changed a couple of meetings back to include Taos Pueblo as a member. So that will be coming before us just to approve those amendments to the JPA. And that was, those are the highlights from the Enchanted Circle Council of Governments or ECOG meeting.
Just a quick question?
Yes.
So I did watch the, the meeting, but, correct me if I'm wrong, maybe I just didn't hear it. But what is, what is the regional board, what would it look like? Who would it?
I don't think that that's decided yet. I think that a logical starting place would be that the members of the ECOG, of the Enchanted Circle Council of Governments would be among that along, you know, on those board, possibly to include also the Ski Valley Corporation. I, that, that's what is TBD, right?
Because it's crucial to me who would be on that board. So, yeah, okay.
I think that's exactly the, the kind of work that would need to be sorted out, you know, if there's interest. But yeah, there isn't, there isn't an answer to that yet, what it would look like.
Would it mean that they would have to create bylaw then as to what this board would look like?
I would, I would assume so, yeah.
Okay. And so what's the next step for doing that?
That rests with the mayor of Taos right now. I'm not sure how he's going to go forward. I mean, I think people in the meeting had kind of similar questions, like, well, what did it look, what would it look like? What would be required of us? Like, what's, what's our representation look like if we're a member? What's our financial contribution if we're a member? So I'm not sure how he's exploring those, those questions or if we need another ECOG meeting or a different kind of meeting. Obviously, it would be something that we as a team would discuss and talk through before. I mean, it wouldn't be an action that any one of us alone would take in the ECOG. That would, that would never happen.
Okay, thank you. I was just trying to figure out timeline, especially now that they're trying to, to get that up and running.
Yeah.
And what that would look like.
That's a good question. I will see if I can follow up with him and come back and give you the questions about what, what those exact next steps in the timeline for them are, are going to look like. Absolutely. Anything else, commissioners?
Commissioner Beale and I attended a Holy Cross Hospital meeting on September 20th, and it was actually not with the Holy Cross Hospital staff. It was with their consultant doing their five-year strategic planning. And the first question they asked was, what is going well with Holy Cross Hospital? And so we gave them back, feedback on that. And then we, of course, raised our concerns that we've raised continually, the, the local nurses versus the traveling nurses, the transporting of patients, and the financial, financial reports. And I believe that we're due a financial report quarterly in, in September. I don't know, maybe, has anyone seen it?
Thank you. That also sounds like potential new business, that we would want to review that. But thank you for that announcement. And Commissioner Beale, do you, did you have anything to add about that meeting?
No, I think you did well.
All right, thank you. Then this takes us to Item 17 on our agenda, which is adjournment. Could, I would entertain a motion to adjourn at 11:11. Thank you, Commissioner Muskin, this is her second.
Second.
Thank you, Commissioner Beale. All those in favor?
Aye.
All right, our meeting is adjourned at 11:11 on Tuesday, October 3, 2023.